Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll start with our COVID update. Amber and Jimmy will give us the numbers. I don't think there's been much of a change in the week.
I know, the number of, you know, confirmed positives or official positives is eighty this week, and it was eighty last week, so no change there. And then the percentage positive fourteen day rolling average for Long Island has gone from four point five percent to three point eight percent.
That's a good thing. Chief, anything on your end?
No, Amber has covered most of the things. It's starting to trend slightly downward. We're hoping it stays that way. I think the country's seeing it in other areas too, so, you know, we're hoping for a different trend. So, but we're monitoring it and we'll continue to monitor it.
Okay, we got a notice from Dr. Dolger this week that the school is following their protocol that if people on the staff aren't vaccinated, they have to have a test once a week that is mandated by the state now, and we're following that. It hasn't reached our level of local government yet, but we're paying attention to that. And the other thing we're looking at is there's been some concern about access to town board meetings. I know a number of the committees feel more comfortable going back to Zoom for a while. We're gonna continue our town board meetings as hybrid, but we're gonna tighten up the meeting room a little bit more. We're gonna have, starting next week, I think we're gonna have somebody at the door, and we're gonna check, we're gonna check for your vaccination card and make sure the people are vaccinated. And we're gonna start with twelve people in the room, and usually we don't have twelve people, but that's a number that feels we can comfortably seat and not worry about overcrowding. And again, you know, the numbers are going, seem to be going down, but we just wanna play it safe.
Very one thing I just want to point out is that anybody that's not able to attend in person because of a vaccination status is still able to attend via Zoom.
Right.
And or through some other electronic.
Right, and we'll continue all the meetings hybrid so that, you know, people have the ability to join us through Zoom. Okay.
Just to share one thing, I went to a doctor yesterday, a regular checkup for my family doctor over in Greenport. And I was scheduled to get a booster, you know, an hour afterwards, and he said to me, I don't recommend it. I mean, it was exactly six months to the day that I got my second vaccination. And he said, there's no, even though you're over sixty-five, you're in perfectly good health. I am only telling my patients that if you are above the age of sixty-five and you have some type of, you know, compromised situation or your health is in jeopardy, then yes, you can go for the booster. Otherwise, he's recommending that you stay another two months, wait for the eight-month mark. So I drove to, you know, I was going into Riverhead anyhow, you have space, so I went by the CVS in Matata. Cancelled my appointment, but, you know, if you don't, if you're not getting any advice from your doctor, you know, you may be making a mistake. And he just said to me, this, you're not putting yourself in jeopardy, but you're perfectly covered for that first eight months because of your health. And why take it early? And, you know, when you could take it in two months and have that booster last you even longer. So I think it made perfectly good sense to listen to that logic. And as opposed to Margaret, who, you know, she does have some issues, and she went, she got a booster. No reaction whatsoever as of today, you know, and got it yesterday, and she got a booster shot at CVS. So I think it's gonna be available for us, it's gonna be easier to get. But I think, you know, if you're in good health, don't just go by age or by your overall health. And that goes for people that are under sixty-five that might be in poor health. Check with your local doctor and find out from your local doctor what they recommend.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, everybody. Okay, next on the list, October 2nd, we're gonna have the volunteer recognition celebration at Wade's Beach. And rather than wait till the last minute, we just wanna make sure everybody's aware that we're gonna change the parking regulations down by Wade's Beach. The west side, the Wade's Beach side of the road, the west side and the south side of the road. We're gonna take away the no parking because we're anticipating some overflow parking. So Chief, did you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to bring up a map now. So, yeah, we feel very comfortable that if we leave the parking in place on the north and east side of the road, no parking on that side, but we allow parking with some direction on the south and west side, we should be fine. And I'm just gonna pull up a map, so I'm showing you what I'm talking about here. Is my screen share on?
Yes.
Yes.
And I can just make this a satellite. So how's the visibility on that?
That's good.
Good. So we will allow parking from Seagate Road down here and all the way along South Midway Road towards Sandpiper, depending on the need. On this side of the road, we're gonna keep this restrictive, that no one will be able to park along this area here. If you can see my mouse rolling along that location, so that'll remain no parking. This will allow parking, and we'll probably also try to put the volunteers up on Seagate. Anybody there doing preparatory work so that we leave as much room in the parking lot as possible. So just given those neighbors, our neighbors up on Seagate Road adds up that you may see some parking along that road for the duration. Jim Coligan, I believe it's two-thirty to six-thirty, is that correct on the time?
Yes, sir.
Yep. So if the town board by resolution at your next meeting, which I think is just before this event, we can lift that restriction for that four-hour block, that would be helpful.
All right. Couple of things on that, Jim, since I went to a meeting, I don't have to do it around the table. The parking lot has approximately, according to Chief, the ability to accommodate about ninety, ninety-five cars in the lot. So obviously, having the volunteers, we're gonna be there early, like eight o'clock in the morning to set up for this event. We cannot do a rain date the next day, so October 2nd is the main event. If it should be a bad day, we're gonna go to October 9th. The reason being, October 3rd in the afternoon is meet the candidates, and we don't want to conflict with that, so. You know, even though it's Zoom, Jim, you know, didn't realize quite, you know, that, but I think we're safe to go the following week. We met last week, you know, for lunch. I just wanted to share a couple of things. The parking was the main thing. No parking along the west and south side of South Midway. We want to encourage, ask all of town employees, particularly the town board, to get involved with the event because this is, you know, we're trying to recognize all the volunteers, so hopefully everybody can participate in it. We're also asking to pass a noise exemption permit for the, because we're having live music at Wade's Beach. So that's something else that we have to do. I gave Dodd a copy of those requirements that we're looking for. And obviously, since we are cosponsoring this with the Lions Club, and thank God for the Lions Club because of all of this preparation is being done by the Lions Club itself. And I want to thank everybody that's involved in that. We will, the day of the event, our cost will be about $2,000, even though we're getting a tremendous amount of donations in terms of food, drink, and things of that nature, we will still have some costs. So Amber, I'm just putting you on alert that it's about a $2,000 bill for us. And that same thing with the Lions Club, they're gonna pick up some, their half of the cost as well. But a vast majority of our expense is gonna be paid through donations. We have speakers that, you know, Dr. Dolger's gonna speak, Jerry's gonna speak, and, you know, we're gonna ask each one of them to kind of pinpoint their remarks. Sarah Monday was supposed to be, you know, one of our feature speakers because she was so involved in this. But she's gonna write a speech, and it's gonna be delivered by, you know, somebody else, but she's attending a wedding, so she can't be in two places at once, but I just wanna recognize the work that Sarah Monday did with the volunteers during that entire time. And of course, the core team with Amber and Chief Reed and Jerry and Brian, who was just, you know, and Brian Sherman also did a tremendous amount of work throughout that time. So it should be about three to four hundred people, we're thinking. So live band, hamburgers, hot dogs, I don't know, beer and wines. We're taking care of a one-day local license and the insurance for that, everything else. It should be a, it should be a pretty nice affair. We're going to all our local merchants, asking for donations. We'll have soft drinks as well. And just, we're ending at six-thirty. It's very nice. If it's a beautiful night, which I hope it is, the sun sets at six-twenty-nine, and the event is over at six-thirty, so.
What time does it start, Jim?
It starts at two-thirty.
Two-thirty.
Yeah, and I think the, for the bulk of, when the speeches are gonna happen, will be happening somewhere around 4:00 PM. So it's just, you know, we don't want it right in the beginning, we don't want to wait for the end, so we feel four o'clock would be prime time to have most of the people there. And the speech will be kept to a very short amount. We'll have a PA system and everything going. We've got the grills all set up over behind the bathrooms. So it's pretty well organized. We're gonna have tent, they happen to have a huge tent, I think one, like thirty by fifty or something of that nature. So that's gonna be erected there. It should be a very, very nice, oh, the tent is thirty by thirty, I'm sorry. And gonna have some cornhole, whole thing set up for people, people wanna play that. Should be a great time. We hope you get the fire department, put a flag over the entrance to the beach, which would make it kind of nice and special. So we're trying to get as many people involved as we possibly can. And we're trying to get the word out. That's about it, folks.
Thanks, Jim. And just to remind everybody, this is a volunteer recognition celebration, but we're hoping, we're inviting the whole community to participate in. It's not closed, it's not open only to the volunteers that helped us, it's open to the whole community.
Very important point.
Okay, next on the list, Bob, you have an update on the transfer of development rights first?
A brief one. The planning board discussed this at their last meeting. They've sent me a number of suggestions, the primary two being that we have heard of the discussions with the Health Department. So I'm gonna try to consult with the Health Department as well, with the Planning Department attorney, who would apparently work on this in East Hampton as well. They didn't have many recommendations from a substantive standpoint. There are a couple of procedural issues that they got into. I will work on those and get back to you.
What do you need from the Health Department, Bob?
The Health Department ultimately has to approve these transfers. And so it needs to be set up in a way that they will be willing to accept.
Okay.
Now, they don't seem to think that the Health Department will, or at least they have not in the past, been willing to accept any prior transfers, which is one of the things that we were really kind of hoping we could negotiate to some extent. So we'll see, we have to see where that goes as far as the negotiation goes.
Why, why wouldn't they accept previous transfers?
I'm not sure. I haven't spoken to them directly about.
I mean, those deals that we've partnered with the county.
Yeah, the Planning Board Attorney has worked with them before. I was at that meeting, and she said that they did not approve those for other municipalities in the past. So she wasn't optimistic that we would be able to get it approved here.
Albert, I'm gonna try to set up a meeting with, our last meeting, when we talked about some of our potential housing issues, we met with the Deputy County Executive and members of the Board of Health. I'm gonna try to set it up with the County Executive, Steve Ball, and bring some of these issues up.
Well, I think Albert brings up a good point that we should fight for, you know, why.
Well, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna, exactly.
Partner purchases with Suffolk County.
Right, right, yeah. And there's no reason why we can't, you know, backtrack and, you know, get the development rights.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's in the works.
Is that just for Shelter Island, or is that for South Anthony's, whatever?
The other places have had problems with that. That they've refused to do it, so. Yeah, I guess I'll be, we'll get to discuss.
That's kind of why I wanna go into the, you know, right to the County Executive.
Very frustrating.
Yeah. All right. So just let us know, did you set up the meeting with the Planning Board Attorney yet, Bob?
No.
Okay, let's get that going. Okay. And the next we started to talk about last week was the town code revisions and definitions. Again, we're not looking to, you know, add things, we're trying to tighten up first what we have and then move forward. So Bob, you wanna walk us through this?
Being, you know, the definition of resident, which I had sent around, you know, something very basic.
It's a little louder.
Which I had sent around, which was very basic. You know, right now, I think we have five or six different definitions with different time limits, and as far as how long you have to be, you know, renting, or if that's what you're doing, and with different requirements. So I think standardizing that is probably the first thing to do. My, the other section I'm working on at the moment is Section sixteen of the code, which is basically the governmental organization. And the issue there is that, you know, we have evolved to a great extent is what is included in town government. And our code really hasn't kept up with what we've done. So it really needs to reflect what the committee structure is, what positions we have, what, you know, who the town officers are. You know, things like that really are things that should be in code, and we just haven't been keeping it up. So I'm gonna try to.
So is that something you'll codify and then bring it to us?
Yeah, I think that's probably the, yeah, because there aren't really policy decisions to be made. It's a lot of, mostly a matter of making sure that we require, come up to state mandates. So outside of that, I mean, we can, you know, as far as code review, I just, it's a better of what your legislative priorities are, where you'd like to, you know, to start moving in. I think that's a much larger discussion.
Well, I mean, I just wanna get started, period.
Yeah. We can start probably picking off some of the smaller stuff. The, you know, things that I don't think are terribly, have much of an effect on the.
I think.
People are large, but then we just need to kind of clean up.
I think some of the things we've been called to task on, we should, you know, obviously address. And I think Section sixteen is probably a good portion of it, just our organizational, you know, format. And then, again, definitions, we have to tighten up a lot of definitions.
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to do, and I'll do this when we create, when we do the residency definition, is I'd create a section for specifically just for definitions that would run throughout the code, so that we, you know, the things, so we wouldn't have to have it five different times in five different places. Because the problem with that is that if you change one and forget to change another, then suddenly you've created a conflict within the code. And it's a lot better from just a structural standpoint, if you can say things once and be done with it. You know, so I'd like to work in that way. So I'll put something together and bring it to you.
So if, you know, what I think what the town board needs to know, Bob, is kind of an outline of, you know, is this a six-month process, a year-long process, are we gonna do this piecemeal? Are we starting with definition of terms? If we're starting with the definition of terms, let's start.
Well, I think starting with definitions is a good place because it kind of makes everybody.
That's a good starting point.
And take a look at everything. And.
So let's identify.
And the Section sixteen stuff kind of plays into that as well, so that's all kind of related.
So I think what I would like to say is almost like a, you know, baseball game here. On deck is who? So we're gonna go from definition of terms. Let's identify all the terms that need defining once and be consistent throughout the code. And then, second, what's the next thing we can anticipate going into? And let's see if we can have a, you know, identify those things, say, this may take us six months, it may take us eight months. But here's our starting point, here's our finish line, here's how we're gonna get there. And I think by starting with definition of terms makes a perfectly logical, good sense to start there. How many terms are we talking about? About ten terms? Talking about fifty terms?
I'd say probably about thirty.
Okay.
Just having to go through it once or twice as far as.
So I think a first step then is to identify those thirty terms. So, I mean, by next week, if we can all look at the terms that need defining, let's identify those thirty terms that need clarification and consistency throughout the code.
And likewise, let's put it out to the committees and the planning board and the planning board.
Just so you know, the way I'm looking at the terms and what I would consider a general term is pretty much anything that's common language as opposed to something that's specific to that one little area that we're talking of this code.
Yep.
So for example, if you're getting into, you know, what's the definition of, you know?
A bedroom.
A bedroom, yeah, perfect example.
I was waiting for it. Gave you thirty.
I was gonna say, bees early on in the.
Bedroom.
So, now the, yeah. Yeah, so that's exactly, that's a common thing as opposed to something that's more specific, like, you know, what's a electrical or whatever, but.
All right, so Jerry's point is well taken. Let's identify the couple of committees that we need to bounce us off of, particularly the Planning Board and anybody else that you feel is, needs to be participate. Identify the terms that need to be identified, again, common language throughout the entire code. And something that's not just unique, obviously, if there's a, it's only found in one area of the code, we don't have to, we're looking for terms that are found consistently throughout the code. The definition of a bedroom, throughout that code, consistent. No ifs, ands, or buts.
Yeah, that's the.
Accessory building, you know, what is an accessory building? How do you define it?
Yeah.
Those kinds of terms, so we'll all put our heads together, maybe before next Tuesday, as we look through the code. We'll see if, we'll shoot them to you. If you collate them, put them together, ask the Planning Board for their input, maybe we'll get somewhere with this.
There are actually other areas, accessory buildings actually a very good example, that we may not want to write it in as a definition because it might be much more complex, that we might want that actually to be part of the code.
We'll put it, we'll, by, for next Tuesday, we'll put all our concerns on paper. We'll give them to you, you can have them as the list, then we'll go down the list and.
Yeah, it seems to make sense.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Okay, that's really it. I really didn't have a lot of agenda items. I have two things that I'll start with. I got a call this morning, I didn't return the call yet. We had a business application about a month or two ago from a business in Sag Harbor that wants to do a water taxi. And we had mentioned that we already have a water taxi. Not really a water taxi, it's a shuttle that at Sunset Beach, so this would be a second one. So we have to decide, in general, how do we wanna handle that? Do we wanna put it out to bid? Do we want competing businesses, you know, more than one business in the same location? You know, it's not come up before, so, you know, I didn't wanna call him back till we talked about, you know, I mean, he's the first come, first served, he put his application in a year in advance, so. I don't know if we need to talk about it right now, but we need to talk about it.
Yeah, we need to talk about it, we have time to talk about it, but we won't start talking about it April, we'll start talking about it sometime in the winter because we got a whole bunch of things in front. But I'd like to include some people, I would like to pay constables to be involved in this discussion.
Well, it's more, okay, but that's particular one, but just this concept in general about, you know, business on town property.
Yeah.
How do we do it? You know, do we do RFPs? Do we first come, first serve? How do, you know, how do we wanna handle it?
I think you're just deserving a footside deck.
We wanna be careful.
Exactly.
And we wanna be careful.
And fair.
And fair.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Any questions?
Transparent.
Put it on the, thank you, thank you.
There you go.
Put it on the agenda for, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then the second one I have, is also an application for a business on town property, was from Bert Waif, who has an aquaculture oyster business, and he would like to put, he has a mooring in West Neck Creek, and he would like to have his boat and a platform on the mooring so he can operate his business. And I told him he'd have to come and make a presentation to the town board. I said, I'd like to have the WMAC here, hopefully some bamen come to the meeting, and anybody else that he thought might be appropriate to discuss, you know, the business. I mean, before we suspended the comprehensive plan, you know, agriculture business was a good, you know, part of the discussions about local businesses on Shelter Islands, or certainly we'd like to, you know, work with the bamen any way we could to enhance it, but this is a whole new avenue. So we have to really, you know, look at it, discuss it, see what limitations we wanna put on it, if it's the right location to do it. So I have him coming next week.
I think you also need to consider whether or not you're, that even qualifies as a business on town property.
Well, technically, the bottom.
I mean, but, I mean, if we're gonna, at that point, do all the, do all the bamen need to be licensed for, they've got to do for shellfish?
I think what, I think, I think, and I think the reason Bert did it this way was because the mooring lore, you know, it's one vessel per mooring, so he's looking for more, and I guess he didn't know how to go about doing it.
It seems like a mooring variance than a.
Right. He just wanted to get it on the table, so maybe it's not the right way to do it, but we'll start the discussion. If you can think of anybody else, we should invite you, you know, next week. And that's all I have. We can go around the table. Albert?
The WQI met last Thursday evening. They approved eight thousand grand for Reeve, which I guess we'll get the paperwork on for the next board meeting. Then Norris on Thirty-Eight Branded Parkway, emergency replacement of their system failure. They approved eight thousand dollar grant for that as well. The WAC met, excuse me, yesterday. The water level report, the thirteen monitoring wells that we have on the island from the USGS monitors. It's, the water levels are consistent median levels, and the overall posture is guarded. You know, the continued good conservation measures. Fresh Pond Study, apparently we're awaiting the final report that will list out the options or mitigation measures.
We were told that it would be available now, but the good news was they decided to extend, Lombardo decided to extend the data collection for another four or five weeks during the change of seasons from summer into spring and to fall, so to see how the pond changed, you know. So that's why that was pushed back a little bit. So we'll probably, we'll get the study in, you know, four or five weeks after the last data collection, which end of October, beginning of November, December, November would probably be it.
There was discussion, there were people there from Manantik Creek area. They're concerned about the state of the creek itself, and kind of looking at the Fresh Pond Neighbors Association, what they've been able to do and accomplish, and are trying to organize themselves to look at Manantik Creek.
Yeah, I'll tell you, that's, no, it's not, it's in very poor shape, but it's a great start, and that's good news here that, because I, in the past, it's only been one or two people that have come forward at a time. I actually think that they, they form like the Fresh Pond Neighbors Association. I think they'll be, they'll be able maybe to get some things accomplished, you know, so I'd be very positive to see them come together as a group, as a community.
It's too bad we can't get, we can't get more dredging.
Yeah.
In the creek there, just, that's what it really needs, is a flush. The CPF Committee met yesterday morning. You know, Gordon had said that he had gone over budgeting, that he had submitted to the town for the stewardship of the properties. And I guess I just wanna reiterate, when people see like highway equipment or highway working on CPF. see like highway equipment or highway working on CPF properties, that that doesn't come out of the town budget, that that comes out of the CPF budget.
Yeah.
I know there's some.
Ten percent management, uh.
Misinformation there that I know a lot of people saw crews working at West Neck Reserve, and it was an issue that that those, uh, that comes out of the CPF.
Yeah, Brian made, uh, you know, maintains a, a log of all the hours, and then just submitted to the CPF.
Uh, QR codes will be in place on the properties. Um, soon as they can get some signs erected with the QR codes, people can click on when they go to a, one of the, one of the properties, CPF properties, and get the whole list of information about the history of the particular site, pictures, uh, trail, trails, I mean, that, that's pretty neat that that's coming together. The, uh, also on the town website, if you go to the CPF committee, under Town Committees, go to the CPF committee itself, and then there'll be a listing of the properties, and if you can click on each property, again, to get kind of this land is your land, the history of the property and pictures and stories about the property itself, it's very neat. And, uh, I guess last but not least, um, two great parties this weekend. Taylor's Island. Had a really nice affair at White Oak. Taylor's Island Foundation. And the Goat Hill Celebration, the one twenty year celebration that was really, uh, extremely successful and, and, uh, hats off to the committee, very frank, Lisa and the rest of the committee that put that party together, was really a wonderful event.
That's all I have, Jerry.
Thank you, Albert. Amber?
Um, Albert was busy this weekend, covered WQI. Um, the only other committee meeting that I had was, uh, we had website this morning, and we just continue to keep working on updating the town website. Um, we are going to be, when budget season starts, October fifth, I think is the right date. We will then post the preliminary budget on the website so that people will be able to see it more easily this year. We won't have updates as we make changes through the town board meetings, but, um, the preliminary budget will be there as well as the dates for the different meetings. And yeah, I think that's it. We just keep trying to improve it, you know, day by day, month by month. That's it. I must not have brought planning board. I know they, um, Bob spoke about the fact that they, I mean, you know, there's always like little things going on the planning board, but Bob spoke about the one that concerned us with the transfer development rights and the discussion there, so.
Jim? Just like to echo, uh, Albert's, uh, praise for that Taylor's Island function and for the, uh, one hundred twentieth anniversary of Shelter Island Country Club. Two great events, well attended by a lot of people. And the organizers did a marvelous job, and the weather really cooperated. Who was in charge of predicting that weather for Friday and Saturday night, so that was perfect. A couple of committee reports, I attended the Shoreline Access Task Force, uh, meeting this morning. Um, you'd be happy to know, Jerry, that we sold day passes, dot, six hundred and ninety of them. Um, were sold online of the seven hundred and fifty-six, which means that over ninety percent of the day passes were bought online for a revenue of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars brought in on the online alone. Obviously, we do pay a dollar eighty-five for that twenty-five dollars for each transaction. But that means that the town obviously is collecting twenty-three dollars and fifteen cents on each transaction, which is nice. Um, obviously, there are a couple of the costs that go along with that, maintaining that, but this online has been very successful. Uh, so seven hundred and fifty-six total. I will tell you, in two thousand seventeen, it was one fifty-two, two thousand eighteen, two oh nine, two thousand nineteen, two forty-seven. So Mr. Supervisor, it basically tripled, you know, I mean, it, it got a lot in. Uh, one thing that came about with this is, uh, as, as you realize, the day passes were, we limited the number of day passes, uh, to, uh, twenty for Wade's Beach maximum and ten for other access points throughout the island for a total of thirty per day. We do know that we did exceed the maximum, didn't exceed it. We had to reject people that because of the ten or the twenty. So what we are doing is we're actually going to be able to identify the days and where they were. Was it at Wade's? Or was it around the island? And I kind of think it was more around the island where we got to ten, and that was it. So they, they weren't able to produce that. So the committee was looking at perhaps recommending to the town board that you go from keep twenty at Wade's and maybe go from ten to fifteen or from ten to twenty around the rest of the island, but that it's preliminary because we don't know how many, if it was only for two days, then I think we stick with what we got. If it was for twenty days where we reached the maximum of ten, that's something that we should take a look at that. So they're very flexible as far as that's concerned. So they talked a little bit about the, the review of their, uh, reports, particularly the maintenance of marine assets. Uh, Joe has been doing a great job outside, Town Engineer Joe Finara, uh, along with Brian, uh, working on that capital plan, particularly spending a lot of time looking at the maintenance of our marine assets, which that's a good thing. So we can, you know, rather than wait for them to break become an immediate, you know, catastrophe, maybe we'll know in advance, you know, when they're due for repair and when they're due to be replaced, so that, you know, that's, that's a positive thing. Um, the remaining parts of, uh, the fall of this year, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna finish up the remaining, uh, town access points and landings. They pretty much have done that. They're in the process of reviewing all their notes from all the, the committee members on previous visits. They're making final dispositions on that, on those landings that had been lost or abandoned. And now, so that's something which they're working through, Bob, being able to identify every one of those that thirty years ago, that was a town landing. Today, it's no longer. Why? And how did that happen? We want to prevent that from happening in the future. So all the final recommendations will be made, uh, as we move forward. It was, we had a few visitors on this morning. Um, Peter wanted to, uh, praise the Highway Department, Public Works Department, Chief Reed and Joe Finara for their outstanding work that they've done this year in helping them execute their plan. And on behalf of the town board, I, I did, uh, congratulate the members of this, uh, committee. Was a tough assignment. Um, there was a little, there were probably more flack over signs than anything else, you know, where signs were put, where they weren't put, how they read. But by and large, when you really think about it, the organization of our beaches and our access points and our town landings, storage of boats, all of this has been greatly improved with their work, you know, so, you know. There are racks, there are people now that, you know, pay a small fee to put their boat on a rack to have it there, not laying on the beach. Uh, it's in the right spot. So I think they've done a, an amazing job. I think the town board should seriously consider um, when their mission is finished and they finish all the accessory, uh, town landings and everything, do we keep them in place periodically to meet or meet at least once or twice annually? To be able to review some of the concerns that the town board has. They are a talented group of people, and they're very committed to their jobs. And Peter Veilberg, uh, Veilbig and, uh, and Boatane have done outstanding jobs directing that, so. Couldn't say enough nice things about the committee. And I echoed, and that's, was shared by some of the people who were on the, the, the group this morning, so. Thank you very, very much.
Jim, before you move on, um, with regard to the town landings?
Yes.
If when you're discussing where, uh, you know, the ones that have, you know, prior landings that have been abandoned, if you could ask them to look into those that are have some type of legal problem, whether, whether they've been legally abandoned or taken over by someone else, as opposed to those that just might need, uh, you know, maintenance to be reestablished?
Yeah.
I, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, you might want to just shoot that email off to Peter, you know, on that concern. You know, that's, that's a legitimate concern. Uh, last night we had a Zoom meeting with Recreation Committee. Uh, summer programs exceeded revenues. Amber would be happy about that. We projected twenty-eight thousand, uh, for the year. We have taken in thirty thousand as of today. And, uh, we will continue to collect throughout the year, so we will, we will meet our revenue projections and then some. Uh, the programs went extremely well. We had, uh, two hundred plus kids in a variety of programs during the summer. The fall programs began last week for five to eleven year olds. Uh, after school programs, sports skill programs, and art classes are being offered as we speak. Uh, the worker classes for adults. You can now, you know, obviously you can buy a card. Uh, if you, if you don't want to go on a, and you just want a, a pass for a class and one of the exercise classes, workout classes, you can buy a card of ten for forty-five dollars. That's four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, they're thinking about moving that to fifty-five dollars, five dollars and fifty cents for next year because that's something that's that has made have a little bit of a revenue shortcoming, so we're thinking about that, plus the fact that taking care of the people that run those, those programs. Um, there is a five dollar drop in if you just want to drop in for one. They're thinking about raising that to ten dollars, but they're, they're gonna look at that, they'll make a recommendation. Bethany will make a recommendation on that later. Uh, so from a recreation point of view, things have gone extremely well. Fit Center, uh, they are replacing a leg press. It's an old machine. It's about fifteen to twenty years of age. It's, uh, very difficult, particularly for older people to get in and out of. Uh, the new one we're purchasing, which we budgeted for, is more adjustable. Uh, and it's a better machine and, uh, economy of space. So we're, we're looking to replace that piece of machinery. Bethany will be filling out everything, but it's budgeted for, so. And it's on, on budget. Um, roof update, far right hand part of the gym. So when you walk into the gym and you walk in the Fit Center, in the back right hand corner, there's been a leak for a while. There's another leak closer to the entrance. So the, the roof of the Fit Center is the responsibility of the school. We're responsible for the contents inside the Fit Center. They're responsible for the facility. So Mr. Dunning is, uh, is looking into that to make those repairs. Um, as we speak to that, I, we would like it done hopefully before winter time. Uh, would be a good time to look at. Um, we looked at the twenty twenty fees. Uh, right now, if you're an adult, uh, you pay about two hundred fifty-five dollars for the year. For a family, you pay three ninety-five. For youth membership, a hundred and fifty dollars for the year. And if you're active military or active EMS or EMTs or I guess EMS, um, it is one seventy-five. The daily pass is fifteen dollars. So we're looking at those fees a little bit. Uh, we're not sure how that's going to impact. Jerry echoed a concern about seniors being, you know, wanting to go to the Fit Center. And, uh, obviously, they're, they're, they're impacted by these fees. So actually, what I recommended, and Emily is going to follow through, is let's have a breakdown of all our first floor categories. How many youth, how many military EMS, how many families, and how many adults? We'll break that all down. We'll look at what the needs are to run the place, and then we'll act accordingly. They'll make a, a recommendation. They'll give it to, to the town board to look at, uh, and I'm sure Bethany will come in and make some type of presentation. We talked a little bit about Garth's Ceremony. Uh, it is obviously scheduled for October sixteenth. If it's raining, we're gonna go inside. If it's a nice day, we're staying outside. There'll be light food and drink there. Dave Clark will open up the Legion. There'll be a cash bar immediately following. The ceremony will begin at three, should be over by four o'clock. We're hoping for a good turnout. Uh, we're gonna coordinate with the town to put chairs outside and, uh, and a P A system, so we have that available. And, um, the one thing about the, uh, the construction of the steps going in. Uh, Brian, we talked about that at the Capitol Planning Meeting. We're waiting till after Veterans Day. So, but it would be nice if we had all the things in place, ready to go. So when Veteran Day is over, we have that little six week window between Veterans Day and Christmas to be able to execute the project. Now, the project is not only replacing the staircase, it's making the building ADA compliant. It's bringing the level of the staircase up to the level, so there's no lip. It's replacing the roof and the pillars with a brand new overhang and hopefully taking care of the front door push bar. Might as well do it all at once. If we're gonna work on the back door thing, that could be done at a later, what Bethany is hoping for is if the, the construction's gonna take a week to two weeks, that we don't close the place down so that they don't have access to the building, so we can e- enter, enter the building through the rear. Anybody have any news on election, future for elections? Have we discussed the school at all about?
The library's having the, uh,
Okay.
Meet the candidate.
Okay, but I mean, I, in terms of actual elections where maybe the gym eventually will no longer be used and will be starting to use the, uh, the, uh, Community Center for elections, so.
Jim, I have a little bit on that. Uh, the school put us on notice, they put us on notice a while back that they want to, um, remove the electoral process from the school. In the meantime, um, the police department offered and, and we provide, uh, security services during the electoral process to keep, um, people in the election portion and, and the students when the schools open and the other portions. When the school's closed, it's not as big of a deal, but they have noticed us that they'd like to see the town do the elections in, in a separate facility if we can accommodate that. And the Youth Community Center was the location that was discussed.
That all makes perfectly good sense.
Jim, I could also add a little bit to that. The primary concern on this wasn't necessarily the elections because most times on Election Day, the school is going to be closed anyway. The primary concern was the fact that we had gone to this early, um, early voting. Since we no longer have an early voting location on Shelter Island. Some of that has been, uh, uh, you know, we, we had to contract with the, uh, the, uh, Board of Elections, do the early voting there. Uh, that's basically gone away since the early voting was gone. Um, so as at this point, we don't have any specifically requirements to do, uh, voting anywhere other than the school, which I believe they're still doing it there for, uh, the, this current election cycle anyway.
The second half of the Recreation Meeting was about the mission and the future of the, and Kim has talked to you about that. So we're a committee of seven. We just got a, uh, somebody stepping down, Jim Polycrone has been on it for ten years. It was just time to set after ten years, time for him to move on. So we're down to six. We're okay about staying at six and even going to five. We feel that, uh, you know, we have other outside people that could help. You know, and specific things for the rec, plus you have Bethany, plus you have Emily that, you know, are there and I'm there, it's, uh, not just a layers on, but somebody that's been in the profession for thirty-five years, so. Obviously, we have enough assets, I think, there to be able to run the department with five people. We talked about meeting every other month. Uh, I don't think it's, uh, we don't want to go to quarterly. And we, I, I don't think we have enough on the table to meet monthly, so we're gonna go every other month. We'll have six meetings unless called upon to meet more frequently, we're gonna meet every other month. We're talking about promoting safety enhancements. We're talking about future facility enhancements. We're talking about, talking about trending, you know, the Fit Centers. The Fit Center are gonna be still in the school building ten years from now. Uh, that's a big question mark, you know, that, you know, there's a lot of questions with the school in general, but the Fit Center itself. So what I would like to see that, the, the planning do, I, I think Bethany and Emily, the combination of two are dynamite. And one, she did, Bethany does a great job on that rec, and, and Emily does a great job over in that Fit Center. So I would like to see our energies put elsewhere in terms of coming up with a multi-year plan of where we might want to be in ten years with our Recreation Department. So yes, nice job at the, at Fisk Field upgrading basketball, nice job tennis court, pickleball courts. You know, that school's done that. We can work with the school on different projects. We can work with the town on different projects. But we want to get people outside. We want to keep people physically fit. And we're looking ten years down the road of where we would like to be with a, perhaps with a Fit Center. And we're looking ten years down the road of where we would like to be with the, perhaps with the Fit Center. So I think now's the time to start the planning on it, not waiting and, and hit the panic button when we're told we're not, we're no longer there, so. We could still do a lot with public relations. We could still do a lot with support. I also think that I can coordinate with the Shelter Island Health and Wellness Group on things with the, with that group of people because they kind of go hand in hand, the mental health and the physical well-being, it all goes hand in hand, so. I think, I think we have some, we, we might state, restate our mission slightly different, but I think we're heading in the right direction. Joe Stella and I met.
Jim, before you move on, two things.
Yes, sir.
One, has Garth's family been notified so they can save the date?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the other one, you said the rec department revenues are up. How about the Fit Center?
Fit Center, we're, we're, we're up from where we were obviously during COVID because people were coming back in. Are we back to pre-COVID times? No. We're not, we haven't recovered that because we're still, we're still exercising some, some caution, you know, beforehand. If twenty people are in the Fit Center at the same time, it didn't matter.
Right.
Now it does. We just can't accommodate people to the same degree that we could try to COVID. But I think we took that into account when we did the budget last year.
Yep.
And I think we are starting to see that recovery unfold.
Okay.
So, you know, pretty happy about that. So, so we had a good Zoom meeting between Joe Stella and I. We talked about the non-disclosure and the need to, you know, and, and I think we, Joe and I pretty much explained that. Stella's very good about approaching people in the heights about some things that need to be approached with. Groundwater modeling is the big issue of the, of the day. The CDM is dead in the water. We cannot use it. We're looking to the USGS, more recent rollout. We're looking at Steve from Hazen and Sawyer, still looking at a new groundwatering model analysis. We should have some information. Really kind of depends whether we're gonna spend forty hours or eighty hours. If we spend forty hours, it's gonna cost Jerry about ten thousand dollars. We spend eighty hours on this water analysis, it's gonna cost about twenty thousand dollars. And that's for the town and for the heights to work out how that's going to be paid.
What are the numbers? I'm sorry.
So if it's a forty-hour study, it'll cost about ten thousand. If it's an eighty-hour study, it will cost twenty thousand. So we're waiting for Hazen and Sawyer to, you know, to come in on exactly what that, what that is. All right. And the other thing is about alternatives. I, I think we're looking at other options. The big problem of the three things that we're trying to do there is the water recharge. So suddenly, there are, and I'm not prepared to sit down and discuss those at this particular time because it's way premature. But there are other options other than recharging perhaps right there at the golf course that we're looking into. Not saying we can't do it, because the study will reveal either yes, a go or a no-go on the impact of the wells. But if we have to move to Plan B, you have a Plan B, we hope to have a Plan B and a Plan C maybe down the road that we can look at if we happen to get to that particular point. Joe and I also, the CAC came up with a problem with Point Lane in Highbury. The water quality at the east end of the pond is in poor shape, but I'd say eighty-five to ninety percent of the pond flushes fairly well and the water quality is decent and there's wildlife there. At the very east end, where that ramp is, which I sent you, everybody pictures on that ramp, which we need some disposition on, you know, is, is that legal or not, Bob? So I know you're, you're involved in that. I know it's on private property, but I, I, I don't know if they needed a permit to put that walkway in at the east end of that pond. I can send you pictures of it.
Yeah.
It's been there for several years. And the other thing is, it's more of a neighborhood association problem. We are working on a dredge with the town, so we're working with that neighbors' association to open up the west end, which that's a little stream that goes in and out, that flushes that pond. If you open it up, obviously, it'll flush a lot better. If the neighborhood association was, you know, wanted to approach the Powers Bay, the, the best way to flush that pond is open up the west side with a dredge and put a pipe in on the east side, sending it out. You have a flow that goes right in and out. That pond would be crystal clear. The water quality would improve dramatically. But again, that's not a town issue. That's really a neighborhood association issue. But I want to thank Joe, and by the way, I that walks barefoot, like a half mile over heavy rocks to get out here. I could not believe it, but his comment to me was, was right on target. But thanks, Joe, for your heads up on that. The last thing I have is, I told you I started to work on these IA system requirements and what would be the triggers? I've done some work on it last week. I'm in contact with several different people on that. I've gotten what, some feedback from Kevin McDonald. I recently, as of yesterday, got some stuff in the mail that I haven't had time to look at in terms of what some of the people on the South Fork are doing. It covers expansions and renovations. And it's divided into four categories. New construction for single-family residents. New construction for other, other than single-family residents like commercial, multifamily and mixed use. And then the third and fourth ones are major reconstruction. What are the triggers for single-family residents? And what are the triggers for other construction projects, commercial, multifamily and mixed? So those are the four categories. I've got a list of four, seven, eleven, fifteen different triggers. I'm gonna take a look at some of the other things, add and subtract from this. I'm gonna share it. I would love to get together with Halbert. I would love to get together with Joe and the supervisor and maybe one or two other people that we might want to pick, maybe somebody from the W A C and look at these triggers and maybe then refine them and then make a recommendation back to the town board on new triggers and how to, how to, how we proceed in the coming months. So that's, that's the goal. I kind of think that we can do this within the next two to three weeks. Give me just a few more days this week and I'll get everything to you, Halbert, and to Jerry. And I'll, I'll share with the entire board, obviously. And maybe think about who we might want to put in that group. Obviously, Joe is a, is an important part of that. And maybe one other person, and we can sit down and refine this and then make, refine the list, say, you know, here's what we can, do we implement it all at once? Do we implement the piecemeal? Is it over the course of a year? That'll be decisions that we can make after we look at the criteria. But definitely will not stop at one, two, four and five because this hits heavy on item number three. Reconstruction and, and construction. So new construction and reconstruction and renovations. So I think that's where we're at, is totally targets number three of that thing, okay? That's it. That's all I got.
Okay. Bob, you have anything?
Nope.
Scotty? You good? Okay. Anybody in your ambros or Julia?
I'm good, Jerry. Thank you very much.
All good, Jerry. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the audience? Okay, I'll make a motion. We close the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, I apologize. We have to go into a special meeting to approve the Leon, is it a special permit?
Special permit.
Special permit. Okay. The first thing we have to do is sign the waiver notice that we're going into a special meeting. You have the resolution?
I haven't seen it.
Bob, you have the resolution?
I sent last week. Yep, that's it.
Yeah, that's why I wanted you to check.
You had it?
I printed it for you.
We'll be all right for this.
Yes, okay.
Let me just double-check and. Thank you. All right, so. Whereas S H twenty-nine West Neck LLC applicant has applied to the Shelter Island Town Board for permission to alter the use of the premises at twenty-nine West Neck Road, Shelter Island, New York, and Zoned, Zone B Business Zone designated as Suffolk County Tax Map Lot zero seven hundred dash one four dash three dash nine point one, the premises. And whereas the applicant proposes change of use from a bank to a thirty-eight, eventually expanding to seventy-six seats at a later date, seat restaurant with indoor and outdoor seating utilizing the existing two thousand three hundred eighty-four square foot building with a new indoor bar, new patio, new walkways, expanded parking lot, one new curb cut, new generator, two new underground propane tanks, new trash enclosure, new exterior lighting, exterior drainage system, replacement of the septic system and a renovation of the existing building, including the basement with the new exterior stair. Whereas it has been, where it has been determined that this application requires site plan review and a special permit regarding the change of use from the town board. Whereas approval from Suffolk County Department of Health for a new IA septic system is pending and was submitted on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas this board considered the proposed action at a public hearing pursuant to notice on date September tenth, twenty twenty-one, and whereas this board wishes to render a decision on this special permit and site plan review. Now therefore be it resolved that this board hereby establishes itself as lead agency pursuant to SECRA and be it further resolved that this board adopts a negative declaration finding that this is an unlisted action which will not result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment based on the analysis set forth in the E A F Parts One and Two and the negative declaration. And be it further resolved that the town board makes the following findings as to the special permit. One, this project involves a conversion of a bank to a restaurant. And two, the applicant is working with the Health Department to upgrade to nitrogen-reducing septic systems. And three, there is a need on Shelter Island for year-round restaurants. And four, the site plan has been reviewed and found to be acceptable. And be it further resolved that a special permit approving the change of use from bank to a restaurant and the approval of the plan of the site plan by Jeffrey T. Butler, P E P C dated three seventeen twenty-one, S P one dash four, S P seven dash eleven, and the preliminary plans of Robert Kahn Architect dated seven twenty-seven twenty-one, pages A one hundred through A one oh three and A two oh one through A two oh two is granted, subject to the following conditions. One, the building permit shall not be issued until the applicant has received approval of the Suffolk County Department of Health to install a nitrogen-reducing septic system and complied with all Health Department requirements. Two, the applicant shall obtain all necessary governmental approvals and licenses. Three, one parking space shall be provided off-street for four persons of rated occupancy, including outside dining, and determine that the New York State Uniform Building and Fire Prevention Code or ten spaces, whichever is greater. Four, there shall be no drive-through facilities. Five, signage and exterior lighting shall be pursuant to town code. Resolve that copies of this approval shall be filed with the building inspector. So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Okay, now we can close the town board meeting. Thank you all for attending.